Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I, Secretary General, do comply with the United States of America's commands to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Opeland, if you'll give us the TV coverage announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The special hearing of November 13th, 2008 will be televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Palm Po, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of the special hearing will be on Saturday, November 15th, and Sunday, November 16th, at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like we don't have any agenda discussion at this point, so if there is anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an item not on today's agenda, flag me down and fill out a slip. Otherwise, if you are wishing to speak to an item not on our agenda, give me the high sign. I don't see any, so I think we will close the public comment at this point and move to our standard agenda, unless there are any elements to discuss, Ms. Black, or we're in good shape.
Mr. Chair, I think we're in good shape.
Well, then, Ms. Opeland, if you'll read the first item into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Scott Denaway, SureSite Consulting Group, LLC, on behalf of T-Mobile to consider case number 08CUP17, application filed on March 13th, 2008, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're ready for our staff report. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, actually, on this item, we're proposing to drop it from the agenda. I think we had indicated that at our Agenda Status Report last week and yesterday, so I think we just want to drop it from the agenda, and we'll renotice it when it's ready.
Motion.
Sure.
All right.
I'll make a motion to drop this from the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
Okay. Why don't we read number two into the record?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend that we go ahead and read two and three into the record because we've been handling them together, and I think, as you'll see, we might as well handle them together this morning.
Let's do so, then.
Okay, so item number two, the Garrity Appeal of S-bar denial. The following is the hearing on the request of the property owner, Mr. David Garrity, to consider the appeal number 08APL12, application filed on March 14th, 2008, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15270 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA. And number three, the Garrity Student Housing Addition. The following is the hearing on the request of the property owner, Mr. David Garrity, to consider case number 07AMD4, application filed on March 23rd, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15270 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Thank you very much. I realize I'm flying just a little bit blind at the moment with using the previous November 13th agenda, so excuse me for that. I'm back in the saddle. Now, I think would be a great time to have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We just circulated another memo. I recently received, late last week, another email from Mr. Garrity asking for another continuance of his case that he wouldn't be available today. I can proceed with the presentation, or you?
Commissioner Cooney, when we talked about, well, I suppose I would look to all my colleagues, there was some fairly definitive discussion about looking forward to further continuances here. Does anyone want to weigh in, or? I haven't finished the memo itself, so. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair, it would appear from Mr. Garrity's email that he wants to put his project on hold, so rather than continue it, I would just think that we should just drop it.
Okay.
Ms. Black looks like she's going to provide some advice.
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, I'll just remind you where we were at with this particular application. I think that the last substantive hearing we had on the application, the applicant had indicated that he didn't even believe that the development plan was a proper permit. I think we've gotten beyond that with him, but it's clear that he's not expeditiously trying to resolve a violation, and so if we do drop it today, I think we will pursue this matter as a violation and not continue to place the resolution of the violation on hold pending processing of this application, because we're just not getting anywhere very quickly. So I just wanted you to understand the consequence of your dropping the matter, if that's what you choose to do.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, at the last hearing, I made the statement that I saw evidence from the correspondence with Mr. Garrity that he was not acting entirely in good faith with respect to the application process, and noted that the county in processing the application was holding up on any zoning enforcement. It appears now that Mr. Garrity is continuing that effort to delay enforcement by keeping alive the application. So I would not only concur with Ms. Black's suggestion as to the department's direction, but I would encourage it and vote to drop the matter, drop both these matters from current planning commission considerations subject to being reset at an appropriate time should Mr. Garrity reengage.
Okay. Commissioner Blau?
Just a question. I don't have any problem with that, but I'm curious if we would be better off to simply vote on the matter itself and uphold what the BAR has done. I'm just concerned that dropping it would further confuse the enforcement, and if it does, I'm not in favor of that. If it doesn't hinder the enforcement, then I would go along with dropping it.
Okay. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I guess I don't have a really strong feeling, but I think you're right. I think if the commission were to deny it, it would probably send a stronger message.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right, so we have two things to consider. One was the motion as Commissioner Brown made, or a more definitive denial of the project. Would that be the best way to articulate it?
I think we're upholding the BAR's decision, so we're denying the appeal by the applicant.
Correct.
I think that's correct.
Mr. Chair, there are actually two actions. There's the appeal of the BAR's decision, and there is the amendment.
Right.
And we had recommended denial of the amendment and denial of the appeal.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
So I think it would be both those actions.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to...
Mr. Chair, just for the record, you should open the public hearing.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the issue at hand, the Garrity Student Housing Project? If so, please give me a high sign and fill out a slip. I don't see anybody at this point, so I think we will close the public hearing, and now I will entertain a motion to facilitate it. Or I'll do it.
Thank you.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, County Council's suggesting that we handle this as two separate motions, so maybe you want to first make a motion to deny the appeal of the BAR's denial of the project, following staff's recommendation.
All right, I will move that we deny the appeal following staff's recommendation, and...
I'll second it.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
And in the same way, I will also move to deny the amendment, the subsequent item on the record, following the staff's recommendation, and make that motion, and I'll seek a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
Okay. Then, I think, are we prepared to move to our next item, or do we need some setup time?
Just a couple minutes.
Five minutes. We'll take up our next item, and Ms. Opeland, would you read it into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Clearwire to consider case number 07CUP75, application filed on October 3rd, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Okay, and shall we go into our staff report? Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Megan Lowry. I'm the planner on the project before you, Clearwire at Tucker's Grove. As you're familiar with Tucker's Grove, it's off Cathedral Oaks Road at the intersection of North Turnpike Road. The park is zoned recreationally and consists of 19.53 acres and is owned by the County of Santa Barbara. Currently, the park contains picnic grounds, open space, playground area, a ranger's office, a caretaker's residence, and two existing telecommunications facilities. The arrow points to one of the existing telecom facilities, which is a faux monopine tree. This view shows you both the faux monopine tree, which is owned by Verizon, approved in 2005, and the sprint monopole, approved in 2003. The proposed project before you today is an additional telecommunications facility to be located on the existing faux tree. It would consist of three panel antennas, three microwave dishes, and one equipment cabinet contained within the existing equipment area. Here are some photo simulations provided by the applicant that identify the location of the antennas and microwave dishes to be located on the existing tree. Another view shed from Cathedral Oaks Road, and an additional view shed from Cathedral Oaks Road. As you can see, the antennas and microwave dishes would be located below Verizon's existing antennas. Our consistency analysis identified certain policies that were pertinent. Archaeological resources are identified in the area, however, the proposed project would be located on existing structure, and there is no ground disturbance proposed. Biological resources are also sensitive within the area, however, the proposed project is outside of the biological resources buffer, and no disturbance is expected. Visual resources is always a concern of telecommunications facilities, however, this proposal is co-locating on an existing tree, which is encouraged by both our county code and state regulations. The recreational designation of the park is also a concern, as the current use is for recreational use. However, the Land Use Development Code allows telecommunications facilities in all zone districts, including recreational areas. Lastly, your commission must make the finding that the facility would comply with Federal Communications Commission standards. Staff believes that this facility would, as a report submitted by the applicant indicates that the facility would meet the FCC requirements, that the cumulative emissions, including all three facilities, would still remain at a level about .31% of the FCC public limit. Therefore, staff recommends that you adopt the findings, accept the exemption, and approve the project subject to the conditions.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask my colleagues if there are site visit disclosures or anything other disclosures they'd like to make at this point. Commissioner Brown?
Site visit recently.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
The same. I did participate in an earlier location of the same installation, so I recall those circumstances and saw it again.
And I visited the site recently. And with that, are there any commissioner questions with regard to this item? Commissioner Brown?
I just have a question for Commissioner Cooney, actually. I remember the hearings when this took place, and there was considerable discussion about placing this in the park, and I'm just wondering, I was sort of surprised when I went out there, and I'm going, hmm, that's a pretty good-looking tree, and I'm just wondering, the results, were you, sort of, having seen it after your deliberations and approval of the project, were you pleased with how the tree looks and get some feedback from it?
Well, Commissioner Brown, I'm happy to give you my impressions. I don't think the word pleased would be the appropriate one to use. I remember arguing with some passion at the time that I thought it was inappropriate to start planting false trees in parks, and, you know, this is an industry-used solution to attempt to conceal the installation of cell towers. Certainly, Santa Barbara, there's nothing unique about them here. There's one that I see every time driving up to Lake Tahoe on Highway 50, which, among the beautiful conifers, stands out like a sore thumb, both in structure and in color. Compared to that, the one at Tucker's Grove is in the newer technology, and I think the trees are getting better. I would have to say that I feel less opposition to this installation, because we're using an existing tree. Co-location certainly is better than putting another tree up in a slightly different place and having two of them in the same park. So, you know, I think as the second one to the table, Clearwire's in a better position, and I certainly, while I wouldn't prefer to have the installations using Tucker's Grove or any other county park, I have some reluctance to oppose this one on that ground, since I lost the battle the first time around.
And, Mr. Chair, I just have an additional question for staff. When they place the additional antennas on there, is there going to be any additional foliage added to the tree? Is it going to be basically how it looks now? What do you know of what their plans are?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, yes, the applicant would also be going through the BAR and required to conceal their equipment. In addition, the conditions of approval require that they conceal their equipment to the same extent the existing antennas have, so they would add additional foliage.
So, but BAR doesn't, what does BAR see in terms of the additional antennas? Are they seeing sort of examples of what it's supposed to look like? I mean, is that what their review? Because they've already done conceptual, and they've talked about planting some additional trees, but I'm just curious about the additional antennas that are going to be lower.
The antennas themselves are covered with what you call socks, that they like wrap around the antennas themselves and have needles poking out, so they're actually covered themselves.
Okay.
The microwave dishes may not be, but the requirements of the conditions make the applicant conceal them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, yes, excuse me, Ms. Lowry, two questions. One is very minor, and so I'll say that first. On the coordinates on their map, they give a latitude and longitude, and usually it takes three parameters to define a position, latitude, longitude, and mean sea level height, so just a minor thing, they probably should have had it there. All right, that's minor. And the other one deals with the antenna sectors of 0 degrees, 120, and 240, and these sectors are, I thought, were the alignment of the antenna, but it says that the antennas are aligned at azimuths of 100, 216, and 270, and I don't understand that alignment of that azimuth versus the sectors. Is the sector the beam width and the alignment of the azimuth, is that the center point of the antennas, how it's aligned, or what is it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, the sectors identify which, how many areas they're trying to reach.
They're trying to cover a 360.
So if you have three sectors, you're generally pointing in three different directions. It's basically a general direction, whereas the azimuths are a specific coordinate that they're trying to reach. The applicant is here and can speak to that more specifically if you wish.
Well, at 100, 216, and 270, I would think you'd end up with a dead zone, wouldn't you? They're sure there wouldn't be a dead zone. You know, at 0 degrees, 120, and at 240, so you've covered kind of a triangle, you know, like this, but then at 100, you're off over here, and at 216, you're back here, and at 270, you're back here. So this portion seems to be uncovered for coverage. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, the applicant submits the coverage that they need for this area. This particular site isn't intended to cover all of Santa Barbara. It's a specific, it's shooting at a specific coverage area, so there may be potentially another site that is covering one of those.
There's a dead zone that they're not covering.
Correct.
Okay. That's their choice. All right, thank you.
Gosh, and they say we don't have an opportunity to learn anything at these meetings. That was cool. Okay, are there any additional questions from commissioners? We could have an applicant presentation if there's an interest on the part of the applicant. Okay, do we?
I need to announce.
Okay, if you are interested in speaking to this item, I'll give you one second. Please fill out a speaker slip and give it to Commissioner Brown, because I'll have public comment momentarily after the applicant speaks. Please, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Chris Elliott, and I reside at 3220 Cayo Nogera, locally here in Santa Barbara, and I am the representative for the applicant, Clearwire. I do not have a formal presentation this morning, however, I would like to address the specific question of, member Valencia, the azimuths that you're referencing speak to two different topologies of the equipment. One is the coverage equipment, and then the other azimuths are specifically the microwave dishes. So there's effectively six azimuths. Three are...
The microwave.
That's correct. That's correct. So they are looking at different azimuths, so you were partially correct in your assumption, but the three azimuths speak to the points of origin and then completion on the microwave paths. The other ones are simply for coverage. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other questions for this? All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I will go for public comment. Try to keep your remarks to three minutes, if you may, and please go ahead and step up, and if anyone else would like to speak, please get a slip. And Natalie Murray?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm from UCSB, and I was just wondering how big the antennas were in terms of tree size that are going to be placed in the park.
Mr. Chair and commissioners of, and the public, the antennas are standard size for telecommunications. They're dictated by the applicant's technology. The proposed ones that you see before you are approximately 42 inches in length and 6.1 inches in width and 2.7 inches in depth. The antennas aren't, are of low-level emissions, so they are required to comply with FCC requirements that both provides protection for public safety and any other animals or wildlife. So under the current regulations of the FCC, no health or safety impacts to animals or humans otherwise are anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional public comment at this point? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission. And I think if there are any other additional questions, otherwise, I think we're ready to deliberate or contemplate a motion, and...
I'd just like to hear from any of my fellow commissioners if they have any questions, discussions regarding this, perhaps Commissioner Cooney.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Brown, I do note that the BAR specifically commented on the difference in appearance between a normal-looking conifer and the monopine that's in existence, and suggested it should be made to look more like a tree. I would like to encourage that effort to be pursued by the BAR and see if we can do a better job of disguising the antennas, and now there'll be two separate ones, and I'd just like to see us benefit from the latest technology in tree imitation.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if, I appreciate this is going back to BAR for a preliminary, and will staff just provide that to BAR, that recommendation?
Yes.
Their request? Okay, great. Okay. Okay, well, with that, then, I would like to make the following motion, to accept staff's recommendation to adopt the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including SEQA findings, accept the SEQA exemption included in Attachment B pursuant to SEQA, Guideline Sections 15, 303, and approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment C.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and it is wanting of a second.
I'll second.
And it has a second. Is there any further discussion on the item, other than to say good presentation and good way to respond to the questions? I think we'll call the item.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
Okay. I believe we will need about five minutes to set up for the next item, so let's do that. November 13th, and we're on to our next item. Ms. Opeland, would you read it into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Rick Tillman, owner, to consider the following: A, 06DVP6, application filed on May 8th, 2006; B, 08CDP16, application filed on February 5th, 2008; and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303A of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any site disclosures or... I'll ask my colleagues if they have any site disclosures or ex parte disclosures. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I received a phone call from Valerie Olson, Valerie Olson, and also got a, she sent me a letter, which I in turn forwarded to Mr. Villalobos, and I believe all of you got a copy of that letter. In the past, sometime in the past, maybe last year, I've done, I've been to More Mesa, and I understand the view shed issues, since I've been on the mesa itself and have looked back towards the mountains, and I guess it was Tuesday, I made a site visit with Mr. Thielman and asked him questions about the project.
Okay, any other disclosures at this point? Seeing none, let's move to our staff report. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Jackson, members of the Commission, Aaron Briggs. Tonight we are, or today, we are here to review the Thielman Second Dwelling Project. The project site is located at 4864 Vieja Drive in an urban portion of the Galita area. The site is located within the coastal zone, is approximately 1.1 acres in size, and is Zone DR2. And here on the aerial photo, you can see that the site is adjacent to the More Mesa open space area, which Commissioner Brown just spoke of. There is an existing residence on the parcel already. It's a 3,800 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, and the project would construct a second residence on the parcel. The proposed second residence would be approximately 2,200 square feet in size, would also include 640 square feet of tuck-under storage, and also a 600 square foot attached carport. The height of the residence would be approximately 18 and 1/2 feet above existing grade, and the project would also include significant new plantings to screen the residence from views on More Mesa. The project was reviewed by the B A R on eight separate occasions, and the B A R was mainly concerned with the mass bulk and scale of the south elevation of the residence and its visibility as seen from More Mesa. So as it went through the course of these meetings, the mass of the residence along the south elevation was reduced, and the height of the house was reduced by a little over two feet from its original height. And when compared to the existing residence on the site, the maximum height of the new residence would be 17 and 1/2 feet lower than that of the existing residence. And finally, existing vegetation on More Mesa would help screen public views of the house, but again, B A R did require that large trees and shrubs with, at a minimum of 36-inch box oak trees, to be planted along the south elevation to further screen it from views at More Mesa. We have two biological concerns with the project, one being an existing oak tree that is located on the western property line, adjacent to Mr. Kohlstad's house. We did two different arborist reports that studied the roots of the tree and also the health of the tree, and it was determined that there are no significant roots on the Thielman side of the tree, and therefore excavation for the foundation of the residence would not severely impact the tree. Secondly, we have what's considered environmentally sensitive habitat located just south of the property, on the More Mesa property. We have an arroyo willow woodland, and also the E S H meets the local and state criteria to be considered a wetland, but does not meet the Army Corps of Engineers definition of a wetland. So you've noticed in the staff report that I did apply a couple of coastal land use plan and Galita community plan policies related to E S H and to the wetland. And basically, what it boils down to is that there would be a 100-foot buffer required between the proposed development and the existing E S H, and what we've got as part of the project is the residence would be developed 105 feet from the E S H. The existing horse corral there on the property would act as a buffer, and here's more of a graphic illustration. You can see the arroyo woodland down here, kind of shaded in green, the proposed residence here, and then a little difficult to see, but we do have a horse corral in this area which buffers the development from the E S H. And then we did add a condition that would add an additional layer of protection, and we required that fencing be put up 100 feet from the wetland area, and that all construction activities would be carried out over 100 feet from the E S H. The project is consistent with the Article II zoning provisions, including height, setbacks, and parking. The project is also consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan and the Galita community plan. And I wanted to note that I did provide you this morning with a quick memo that added the coastal development permit, as well as the findings for a coastal development permit. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the required findings, including the findings you were provided with this morning, for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report. Number two, accept the exemption pursuant to SEQA. And number three, approve the project subject to the conditions included with Attachment C. And just to be prepared, if this discussion, if you guys would like to see some photos, I have photos that were taken from More Mesa of the project site, so I can provide those if necessary.
Commissioner Questions, Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Briggs, in looking at the conditions, I don't see anything about stormwater runoff issues. How are those being addressed?
We typically have our standard of best management practices, conditions. I'm being told it's condition number 11.
Well, I guess what I'm concerned about is, while I appreciate that the horse corral has been there, the runoff from, particularly from, from the corral, but also the footprint, I guess because of the additional impervious footprint, that there's going to be increased runoff and therefore increased runoff into the horse corral, which will have increased runoff into the willow area, so...
Commissioner Brown, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, we also do have condition number eight, which requires the applicant to install a roof runoff collection and disposal system.
Okay.
And that would aid in infiltration of stormwater runoff.
And where's that runoff going to go? Subsurface infiltration, French drains?
It would be directed to infiltration trenches, French drains, planter boxes, and landscaped areas.
And how is that going to be shown? Is that going to be...
That would be shown on the grading and drainage plans prior to issuance of the permit.
Does B A R review this?
Yes.
So they need to see it on the drawings?
Yes.
Okay, I don't, okay, building plans, okay, great, okay.
I have a quick question. You talked about protecting the wetland, and I thought the measures there to do it are fabulous and great, but I was somewhat kind of trying to figure out, protect it from what?
Chairman Jackson, protect it from a number of things, from construction-related impacts, such as grading activities, heavy equipment. As Commissioner Brown mentioned, siltation, sedimentation, because it's down slope of the property.
Okay, I wasn't anticipating that I would see construction activity on the additional parcel and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I think the siltation, that makes sense, and that's...
Right.
I mean, I like the responses to it, I just wanted to fully understand what we were protecting.
Water quality.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Briggs, my concern, as raised by a number of interested parties, is the level of environmental review, and I note that you have relied on an exception, an exemption, class three exemption from SEQA, which does cover single-family dwellings, and up to three on a lot could even be considered within that exemption. However, that invites a review of the various exceptions to the exemptions, and I know you went through that process and concluded that none of those applied. Now, in the, in the various issues that I've looked at in terms of using the exemptions as opposed to doing the next level of environmental review and coming up with a negative declaration, it appears from the outside that when confronted with these various environmental issues, you suggested conditions to address them, such as lowering the height to address the visual issues, or precluding construction in the, in the areas that might be considered Esha. So, you know, effectively, you've accomplished what would be done if you had determined that the level of review was higher, that is a negative declaration. Did you analyze whether a higher level of review should or would be appropriate in this case?
Yeah, during the natural, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Cooney, during the natural course of our review, we did discuss different approaches to environmental review, and a couple of factors weighed into our decision to go with the exemption. Number one, this area was studied in the Galita Community Plan in the 90s when that was adopted, and it was determined at that time that the DR2 zoning would be appropriate for this area. So back when the community plan was drafted, they assumed that this parcel and parcels on this street would be developed with two residences apiece. In addition to that, the existing horse corral there at the base of the property acts as a really good buffer between the proposed development and the E S H, and because of that fact, in concert with the project being 105 feet from the buffer and its consistency with our policies, we determined that the exemption was an adequate way to go. Thanks.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Since this is the DR2 zone district, and that applies to all the houses along Vieja Drive, the southern edge, the applicant could have built a second unit on this parcel instead of a house? An RSU.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, a second unit is limited in size...
Right.
Depending on the size of the parcel.
Right.
And if the zoning here were E1 or R1...
He could have done that, but not right, but not deep.
The property owner would be allowed to construct a main residence and then a second unit. In this case, the zoning allows for two residences, and one of them does not have to be considered a second residence, there are simply two residences.
Right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for staff at this point? Seeing none, I'll invite the applicant to present, and if you can give me an idea about how long you feel you need for this portion.
I'll just be a minute or two.
Oh.
Hello, I'm Richard Thielman, the applicant. My wife wants me to apologize for her, she couldn't make it today, got called into the hospital. For background, I have lived in the Turnpike Road area since the 1950s and enjoyed More Mesa and surfed its beaches since the mid-1960s. In 1980, on this south-facing lot, I was, I was able to acquire this lot, built a passive solar home, faces due south with exposure for heating. It was designed by Stan Kenniston, one of the pioneers in solar residences at that time. He and Larry Thompson, the architect of the current project, led the development of State Title 24 at about that same time, which incorporated solar into the Building and Energy Compliance Regulations. It is my intent with this home that we will repeat and improve upon the very good performance of the living envelope, the home I'm in now. In 2006, before any project was designed, Building Department counterstaff and Dan Nemeczek, his planner, were consulted numerous times to define exactly where I could go in making a spot for my mother-in-law, who lives with us, and my mother, who still lives in town, to get a resident forum. Of the lots on our private drive, there exists one granny unit conversion and one guest house. These formats were considered, as well as a residential second unit, an in-laws unit, a duplex, all the other names and permutations they have, and it was resolved that under DR2, I could not follow these examples, that I would need to meet the more detailed DR So that's sort of where we ended up at. And while I was doing this, I was assured that by meeting these higher standards, it would resolve any conflicts about whether this was a conforming residence. As an extra note, this morning, I submitted to staff follow-up letters from the large majority of the other homeowners on the drive to their 2007 letter that reconfirms their acceptance of this project and specifically addresses present design as arrived at with the B A R. Having met and exceeded all these requirements, I would ask for your approval for this project. Now, Mr. Thompson will present. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, to make it short, I go back to 1981 with More Mesa, sitting where you sit on the Regional Coastal Commission and leading the discussion on these visual impacts. At that time, we saw this as a great potential, but it was rather undefined. Most of the concern was for the housing on the north. We want huge, bulky, massive, monolithic row of housing, and there was a general policy written for that purpose. It seems, though, that most of those properties have been developed, so most of what could happen has happened in this case. We are very mindful of the need to blend this project into the natural environment, natural colors. We're mindful, even though this is, may not, may not be technically a second unit, in the East Galita Valley Residential Guidelines, which I will call the Guidelines, it talks about pushing that second unit to the back of the lot several times, and also to keep it away from the direct views of neighbors on the adjoining property line, so that a person is looking east toward your house or your property, he isn't looking in your, into your master bedroom window or the family room or something. So we're mindful of that, and we also, our basic intent is to have a, to have a low-setting small house, natural colors and materials, an example of sustainability, and a design that's respectful of the Guidelines. If we'll proceed with the show, we'll go quickly through these pictures, just demonstrate the area that this is in. This is the garage of the existing building, next, and this is the driveway going back, and there's a wall back here on one side as a resonant to the west. This is the existing residence entryway, and then as we go south, all the way to the bottom border at the boundary of the wetland, we're looking north past the horse corral, and you can see the poles that have been up for, gosh, almost two years now, and currently there is a yellow cord that's four and 1/2 feet below the top of this pole. In other words, the real height of this is down, this, of course, is looking up, so it increases that effect, but we have basically lowered the ridge of the house four and 1/2 feet, we've lowered the floor level several feet, we've done both. This is the property line itself, as you can see, the willow, the wetland and the willows are right there, it's a very clean distinction, easy break. The neighborhood with the red areas shows where the two-story elements are in the neighborhood. This is a one- and two-story neighborhood. And looking closer to the site itself, I think you've seen the buffer here, the proposed location, and obviously, this allow, this separation is as much as we can have and still preserve the buffer zone and still preserve some open space for this neighbor and give this fellow some, some open space, too. We have an approved drywall, it has to be accessed, and obviously, by putting the house over here, we've consolidated the paving area, so we don't create a lot of impervious surfaces for the lot. This is the site plan itself, and here is a tree screen that has been proposed that will, we'll see later, will screen the building out from the More Mesa parcel. In the detail, this is an under-story area that just naturally occurs. You can see down below, this is the neighbor, he's constructed fences that are six, seven feet high here, there's a six-foot fence in this area. This is a garage, so there is no real view out of this side of the house, and the view from this living area is screened off on several levels. And the view from this living area is screened off on several levels here from the adjoining This shows the profile of the buildings. As we look up, looking east, here you can see the existing residents. Here's the separation, the 17 feet. This has been brought down. And this line here is a projected line over the tops of the more mature oak trees that have been provided for this screen that will basically screen out the view of the house and Moore Mesa from each other. This, again, shows us in more detail. You can see that the house is low-key, darker, natural colors, but yet, in terms of the guidelines, it has some variation to help break it up. And that's one of the concerns that we articulate the house, not just to have it look like a barracks. This is the landscape plan, which confirms, yes, here is the tree screen. Moving on to the next shot, the floor plan, very quickly, has an angle built in so that basically, the building can receive early morning heat and create a little diversity on the elevation, so it doesn't look, again, like a barracks. And this goes right back to the guidelines, wanting us to articulate, create breaks in the house. The cross-section is very important, because this upper line, this dotted line up here represents a minimal one-story residence. We have built this building within that profile, so bulk-wise, it's actually smaller. And these upper windows up here allow sun to come in and heat and light the back of the house, so that the whole house can be daylit and naturally heated as well. The front is very simple, but yet, there is a carport, which gives a little break, a little privacy from the neighbor over here, if he possibly could see anything. And the entry does face the street, which is a guideline consideration. This is the dividing area between the two lots. There's a lot to the west. This neighbor has made concerns known. And as you can see from the Thielman property, this fence pretty much screens out from eye level down any contact between the two. This is a view around the bottom where there is no fence, and you can see how his views are being screened. The garage is here. There are no views out toward this side where the house is being proposed. Same thing. This also shows the screen that he's erected here, making any concerns about visual connection with his living space rather academic. And to the property itself, this shaded area, which has gotten muddier in this rendition, this is the area from which you can see most of these rooftops on Moore Mesa property. This area, these areas here, this kind of bluish areas, are the areas that you can see the Thielman property to some degree if there were no tree screen. But we are proposing a tree screen. But even, let's just say, it's going to take four or five years for that screen to totally grow up. This is what we're addressing here, just for your orientation. And the next, you'll see, this shows where these views occur. Here's the property here. And of course, this thicket is a very effective screen in itself. These are some of the development along the side of Moore Mesa property to the north. And this looks more recent. I'm not sure exactly when it was approved. And then, as you come in from the east, you can see that these are normal Kona Vision shots. These views are rather distant. This shows nothing, but we have many of these, we have one that just shows the project and reveals the details. If, the resolution isn't too good here, but this is totally screened, coming over to the west side a little bit. And through here, if we could magnify this, we could see that the building would be somewhere in an area like this. And these are the closest approaches on the trails. And the same thing here, the residence is here, and I think you could see the top of a roof in this location if there were no tree screening. This is a montage that was done, the last shot. Here's the existing house. This is the most revealing angle of all, the closest view of all. There are the story poles over here. And the top of the roof is, the building is a greenish, is a greenish roof, brownish, greenish-brown stain, so it's harder to see. But this is the clear story, and the top of the tree screen in a relatively, maybe two or three years after planting. The thing that's interesting here is that this top of roof is a foot and a half higher. It was done for a prior submittal, so it's even less than that. We've literally submerged this house in the foliage. And I think that the concern I have is really how we could go through eight meetings and have answered, as the chairman said, all of their concerns, and yet, all the minutes until the last minutes didn't reflect any of the work we had done, very little. And I think it's a point of operation here to encourage applicants to respond and to give them credit when they do make changes and do make positive input on their projects. It was just, I think, a suggestion going forward that it would, I think it would encourage people to move faster and create more collaboration. But I thank you for your time, and I hope this, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Are there any questions from commissioners at this point?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I will open it for public comment specific to this item. If you have a slip, you need to fill out a slip and give it to Commissioner Brown. Don't all come at once. Okay. I don't see any, so I will bring it back to the commission for additional issues or questions or deliberations. The light board is going, Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I just want to ask Mr. Briggs to address the issue, because it's often a community concern in this area, about the other houses, which are, in many cases, very prominent, the Big Blue House, which I think is referred to as a blue whale. And I think Mr. Thompson has correctly articulated that what has happened has already happened, and we unfortunately can't change the past. But all the houses, I guess the question is, any house in this DR2 zone district, if there are additional houses, will incur design review? Should there be additional, just as this property has?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, that is correct. Any house built in this zone district in this area would be subject to BAR review. And in addition to that, all of these projects would be subject to planning commission review.
All right, okay. And then, any changes to any of the houses, the one that's being proposed here or any of the existing ones, has to come back before the planning commission?
Any changes that are not under substantial conformity with the original approval would come back.
So, if it was a second story?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would come back, okay. I think that's the only question I had.
Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Chair, I'm sensitive to the extensive work that the applicant has done and under the guidance of Mr. Briggs, who's one of the county's finest planners. So, I don't want to make this sound like criticism, but I'd be interested in county council's view, if Ms. Van Mullen has one, as to the appropriateness of the use of the exemption in this case. I think that the end result is identical, that is, the level of review that we would have before us that would allow us to make a decision with all of the mitigation measures incorporated and subject to conditions included, would look pretty much like what we have here. But given that there is a concern among the rest of the community that this is just the first block to fall, and there are going to be others as well, I would not like to see what I perceive potentially as an error in the environmental review process repeated. So, I'll ask Ms. Van Mullen if she agrees. The reason I feel somewhat qualified to even suggest what I have is that we just had a project that underwent intensive review by this commission on the Gaviota Coast. Like the Gaviota Coast, the Moore Mesa area is one of our environmental treasures. And I think when we look at development in these special areas, we need to increase the scrutiny to a higher level, the environmental scrutiny. So, as I read the case law in the past few years and some relatively recent cases, the use of an exemption is narrowly prescribed. In fact, as I was looking through Ms. Black's copy of the regulations, I read in Section 15300.2, which is titled "exceptions," subdivision C, it says, "A categorical exemption shall not be used for an activity where there's a reasonable possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances." So, the question is here, is the level of concern we have about protecting the environment around Moore Mesa, including the visual impact of construction from Moore Mesa, significant enough to take it out of the exemption area? And what I understood from the case law, Ms. Van Mullen, you're closer to these cases, I'm sure, than I, it appears that you can't consider a proposed development as mitigated. That is, you can't take the mitigations that the applicant here has applied, such as lowering the ridge line and lowering the scope of the house and planting trees as a screen, for example. You can't consider those things and then say, as mitigated, the exemption applies. So, do you have any light to bring to that subject?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, I'm not exactly clear on your use of the word mitigated, because in this circumstance, my understanding is this is the project as it is proposed. But to address your question on the use of the exemption, I can't give you an opinion on whether or not it's appropriate to use the exemption, because that's within your discretion. But what I can do to maybe help you in your deliberations is just talk to you about the standard of judicial review that's used on an exemption. And for a categorical exemption, it's substantial evidence on whether or not that exemption is proper. But then, when you look at the use of the exceptions, it's actually split. The substantial evidence standard applies to the agency's initial factual determination on the particular categorical exemption. And then, the fair argument standard applies to the first part of that unusual circumstances test. But then, it gets a little bit more confusing, because the second part of that exception, whether the circumstances surrounding the project are unusual, that's, again, a legal question, so it's substantial evidence. I hope that's helpful, but it's basically a three-part. But whether or not the exemption is appropriate is a substantial evidence standard.
I understand that if we were to decide that the exemption's appropriate, the applicant or the opponents would have a tough uphill fight to overturn that. But I'm really thinking about the commission's level of review. And my concern is that the project has evolved. Eight meetings of the BAR have had some input into the project. In other words, it isn't as proposed that we see it today. It's as much modified and improved over the course of two years of hard work to bring a project here that we can find approvable. So, what I'm suggesting is that the next time we see one of these, what we ought to be doing, and what I feel is appropriate under SEQA, is that we ought to be looking at the difference between the exemption, which reduces the level of environmental review, and a negative declaration pursuant to which we would impose conditions on the project. And as I say, in this case, given the facts that have been elaborated by the applicant and his architect, I feel that we'd be in the same place, that these conditions we'd be concerned about have been mitigated to the point that they do not have a significant effect on the environment. But I think we should have done it through more thorough review. So, that's my concern. It's not the result, it's the process. And I realize that's bordering on deliberation, but I wanted to bring county council's view into it as well.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a comment. I believe I heard earlier that this was the subject of a community plan, and that there was a big community plan done and environmental document prepared then. And it seems to me, if we follow Commissioner Cooney's logic, it made no sense to do the community plan. I mean, I thought the whole idea behind the community plan was to take a look at those visual issues. And I think one of the things that they did very smartly was to make the determination that any project within this DR zone would be subject to BAR review. So, it seems to me, they looked at that issue when the community plan was developed. That was part of the environmental document, and the mitigation measure was that this would be subject to BAR review and subject to commission review. So, for me, to force an applicant to go through the environmental, even an egg deck, seems to be redundant doing it twice. And I would really object to the fact that they would have to pay those costs to do that. In particular, I'm going to say this, I object to the $1,800 that goes to Department Fish and Games if we do an egg deck on the site. I mean, it just seems to me there is a, it just appears to me that there was not a good reason to do the community plan if we're going to make every new applicant go through an environmental review again. So, I'm thinking, and county council, maybe I'm wrong or not, but it seems to me that the exemption is proper, especially in light of the fact that it was subject to a community plan effort and an environmental document done then. Maybe you can comment on that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, I don't really have anything to add to that, other than that, as I said before, the substantial evidence standard applies, and so, the evidence sits before you and all of the facts factor into that substantial evidence when you're making your decision.
I don't know, I just have the question I would ask, just provoked by this dialogue, if I were an applicant. Knowing that I was facing the two processes, why wouldn't I come in with a blue whale, knowing it'll get chiseled down? It seems to incentivize against an applicant working hard to come in from the get-go with a project that would reflect the need. But maybe I'm overly sensitive there. Anyway, are there any additional comments or elements to bring up at this point? Otherwise, I think this is...
Any other commissioner comment?
I just have one comment in relation to the architect's concerns, just so he knows. We had a long discussion yesterday about BARs, and one of the things that I think the BAR and this planning commission is going to do is to get greater detail regarding the minutes of the BAR. We recognize that as being a problem. It was a problem for us on certain projects, that we didn't get enough information from them. So, your comments were well taken, but you're a day late. We discovered that problem yesterday and are taking great strides, I think, to improve that. So, I just want to make that one a comment. Other than that, I'm prepared to approve the project if that's what you're asking for, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, actually, if you look at these minutes, they are detailed. I don't think that was the applicant's or the architect's comment. It was that the BAR didn't really reflect the work that had occurred as the meetings progressed, as I understood it.
But I'm saying, I realize that, but that's missing in there. It would be nice to have it in there.
I don't think it happened in the BAR meeting.
Oh.
I think these minutes are pretty detailed. Yeah, I think you, if you read BAR minutes, you get the sense that it's, exactly, exactly. This is just what I'd like to say about this project. I know it's a great concern of those who live here, and Ms. Olson in particular, about the preservation of view sheds from this mesa. And indeed, it is important, not only to the Moore Mesa Preservation Coalition and to the neighbors and to, I think, to the community at large. But unfortunately, as Mr. Thompson has indicated, that many of these houses, including Mr. Thielman's existing house, sort of have happened. And it doesn't mean that they couldn't have happened differently. They could have, but we can't change that. So, while this is a, I think that the applicant has tried to make this blend in with the dark colors, with the landscape screening. And they've looked at, you know, various considerations about how to make sure that the house isn't prominent, isn't part of this view that we're seeing here. Is that going to satisfy everybody? No, it's not. It's not perfect. But I think it's, you know, usually, I...
But I think it's, you know, usually, I'm the skeptic on this commission about houses and blending, and I think that it's satisfactory. If we could all start over again and do design guidelines and enforce that there shouldn't be two-story houses, and they shouldn't be painted white, and they should all blend in, have dark colors, it'd be different. But we're not there. And so I think that we've done the best that we possibly can do with this project. I just would like to, again, reiterate some of the neighbors' concerns about additional houses on these one-acre lots. And this is the zone district, which does allow for a second house. Even Mr. Colstad, in his lengthy letter, talks about additional houses. But I understand from Mr. Briggs that he himself would be allowed a second residence, if that's what he wanted to do. The other issue I think that we didn't really talk about was that tree, that oak tree. And I did look at that, and that poor oak tree, boy, that tree's really been, kind of been neglected, with fences running into its bark, and double trunks, multiple trunks, which doesn't help its stability. I think it hasn't really been well cared for. But maybe, as a result of this project, maybe the applicant and maybe his neighbor will start to care for it. I think Mr. Telemann has already done some trimming on his side, and perhaps Mr. Colstad will make some efforts to do that, so that it can be, that there can be some more care to that tree, since it is important to the landscape. Other than that, I don't have any comments. I'm prepared to support the project, and I would like to accept staff's recommendation regarding adopting the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings. Accept the exception pursuant to SEQA 15303A of the state's SEQA guidelines contained in Attachment B. Approve the project case number 06DVP, string zeros 06, and 08CDP, string zeros 16, subject to the conditions included in Attachment C, plus the additional documentation that was provided today by Mr. Briggs.
Okay. Was that a, that was a motion? All right, we have a motion. I don't know if everyone had finished their opportunity to facilitate their comments for you.
Okay. I thought they had. But if not, perhaps...
Would you prefer to solicit those comments? Commissioner Blau?
Fine.
We have a motion. All right, we have a...
So we have a good go-to...
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? And I see, Commissioner Cooney, your light is lit.
It is, Mr. Chair. And I would like to ask Commissioner Brown if she would, I don't want this to sound like nitpicking, but when it gets down to it, I again rely on the fact that I think this is a very special place, and, yes, we may have additional homes here. But the part of this motion that I object to is accepting the exemption. So I'm wondering if we could, if you would consider it appropriate, or if others would consider it appropriate. I can vote against the motion, but that might suggest that I don't like this project. What I'd rather do is have a separate vote on that aspect of the approval, and register my opposition in that way, and then I can vote for the balance of the project.
Well, is it your preference not to, what is your, to change the wording?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. I understand that this project is based on use of the exemption. That's the way it's going forward.
Right.
I have suggested that that is an element of the approval I can't support. So if we simply have two votes, one for all the, first of all, just, I would isolate just on that issue, and we can have a vote on that, then we can return, assuming that passes, to the balance of the project.
Okay. Then what I'll do is I'll make my motion less item number two.
Well, I think, in the interest...
As a second holder, I think I'll withdraw my second, but make a suggestion here. I think Commissioner Cooney, being one that splits votes frequently, I appreciate him doing this, wanting to do this, we need to make the first motion as to whether or not it is subject to the exemption 15303. And when that loses, then we'll go back and approve the project. That way, Cooney's on record, Commissioner Cooney's on record for not agreeing for the exemption. So if you want to make, entertain that motion, I will second it.
So, Mr. Chair, if I'm understanding what the commission's suggesting they're going to do, you're going to vote first on whether or not the exemption's appropriate, and then you're going to vote on all three recommendations, because it's a bit odd to...
Right. You can't separate them.
Yes. So I think it's okay, if you want to take a vote on just the use of the exemption first, then I would suggest the second motion include all three actions.
Exactly.
Okay.
First of all, do you wish to...
Well, I don't think that resolves the problem for Commissioner Cooney.
No, it doesn't. Then I'd just go with your motion as is, and I'll vote against the whole thing.
Okay.
If they're integrated, then I'd have to vote against it again.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Right. Okay. So my motion stands.
The motion stands?
And the second stands.
And the second stands. And is there any further discussion? I just want to acknowledge one element here that struck me. The applicant made as much of an effort to address the visual impact to neighbors on both sides as he did to the frontage to Moore Mesa. And this is the second project where I've seen that type of sensitivity. And I was really quite impressed with that. That was, with the focus of concern so much on one aspect, I commend them for keeping those aspects as paramount as they did. And with that, any other comments? Ms. Hopland?
Well, before, I'd just like to make a comment on your comment. I think that's certainly one of the hallmark of the design guidelines, is it's good site planning. And having worked with Mr. Thompson on other projects in other jurisdictions, I think that that's sort of a hallmark of his, of what he does, is that he looks at the site and how it impacts other neighbors. And certainly, I think the guidelines sort of address some of these issues that he brought forth. So I'm ready for the vote, if the commission is. Thank you.
He still gets my commendation. Okay, Ms. Hopland.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries four to one.
Okay. I think we are, unless there are any housekeeping to address or anything like that. Oh, my goodness.
You exceeded all expectations, Mr. Chair. Good job.
Gratuitous flattery notwithstanding.
Two reminders. Number one, if you haven't yet, committed to the planning commission luncheon, we'd be very sad if you weren't there.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. And you have to select, you have to do a menu selection. And second thing is our next...
Perhaps we should go off the record on some of this, unless there's something else.
Well, I can't speak to you as a commission unless I, and the second thing is just a reminder that our next meeting is on December 3rd.
Okay. And with that, we will close the meeting, or adjourn it. Thank you.